Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's live stream of Liverpool City Council's Virtual Planning Committee. Before we actually formally start proceedings, welcome to councillors who were present today and to members of the public. And can I just conduct a brief technical check to make sure everyone can see and hear us okay? First of all, in terms of who's visible on screen, councillor Kennedy, confirm you can hear us and see us okay?
Yes, everything's clear.
Thanks, Malcolm. Councillor Nebe, welcome. Just check your microphone.
Everything's okay.
Perfect, thank you. Councillor Radford, good morning. Your mic's on mute, Steve, just so we can double check your audio. We'll come back to you, Steve. Councillor Mabry, good morning. Start mute, Billy.
Sorry, morning, Michael, everything's fine.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp?
Hello, everything looks good.
Excellent. Councillor Thompson?
Hello, I can see and hear you, thank you.
Perfect. Councillor Conception?
Morning, Mike, I can see and hear you.
Thank you. Chair, councillor O'Brien?
Yes, I can see and hear everybody.
Perfect, thank you. Councillor Hanson?
I'm fine, no problems.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings?
Good morning, all.
Thank you. And councillor Radford, just to go back to you, just if you're able to get your audio working.
Sorry?
That's perfect now, nice and clear now, thank you, Steve.
Hi, Mike, it's Anthony Lovell, I'm also...
Welcome, Anthony. Thank you, thank you for joining.
Yeah, welcome, Anthony, we were waiting for you to join us.
That's perfect. We now have everyone here that we need to, just to confirm for purposes of attendees, we have apologies from councillor Juarez, for which councillor Kemp is present as our alternate today. Obviously, in terms of the conduct of the meeting, this is a virtual committee and as we deal with each item of business, the chair or I will bring in relevant speakers, after which we ask you to pause briefly in the event that members of the committee want to ask questions. For members, if you're not speaking, please keep your microphone on mute, just so we have a nice clear audio feed for everyone here, as well as people watching on the live stream. And for all registered speakers, welcome today. And again, unless you're speaking or called forward, please keep your microphone on mute and your camera off until you're invited forward to speak by the chair. For any presentations, we'll display those clearly on screen as we get to the item concerned, so there'll be a brief pause between a presentation and reverting to teams. Moving into the items of business, do members have any declarations of interest to declare today? No? Just to remind us, to members, if there's any changes to our proceedings or if you become aware of any issues, you can declare at any point, as long as you make a clear indication. Now moving to our minutes of our last virtual meeting, those who only supplements circulated and published yesterday, and that was the meeting held on the 28th of July, which was last Tuesday. I hope you've all had the opportunity to read those minutes and, assuming that is the case, can you indicate by raising your hand or an expression of confirmation that you are satisfied and happy with the minutes for those to be approved? Thank you, colleagues, that's excellent. I have no urgent business to report, therefore on that basis, with your agreement, Chair, I suggest we move to our first item of business, which is number four and relates to an application irrespective Eaton Road, Liverpool 12, in West Derby Ward. Over to you, Chair.
So we now have a brief presentation showing some images and visuals. So if I could have John Hayes to present, and we will be hearing from councillor... No, we won't, that's the next one. There won't be any speakers on this one. That's to you, John.
Thank you, Chair, that presentation is now visible on screen for you all. Just a brief pause while John Hayes, the aircase officer, comes on. He'll be on very briefly, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Can everybody hear me? I've just had some tech problems there.
I can hear you, John.
I do apologise, I got booted out for a moment there, so I've just had to rejoin, so apologies. I'm slightly out of sorts at the minute, let me just get my agenda back up. And I will be with you in a moment. Nearly there, Chair, do apologise, right. Okay, there we go, good to go, right, thank you, Chair. And members, good morning, my name is John Hayes. I am the team leader for development management in the north of Liverpool. Chair, this is an application for a telecommunications mast to be located along Eaton Road, close to the pavilion associated with the Bill Shankly playing fields. As you can see from the report, there is another mast nearby that supports 3G and 4G, about 30 metres to the south. The proposal here is not to replace that, but to provide an additional mast to support 5G. And you as a committee, members of the committee, will be familiar with the various issues associated with telecommunications equipment, in particular the reasons why this particular operator is unable to provide mast sharing in a number of cases.
Why?
Nonetheless, your officers have looked carefully at the proposal. I think the mast was originally submitted at 20 metres, we negotiated it down to 17 and a half. Given the wider context, there is commercial properties on the opposite side of the road and there is obviously the backdrop of the open playing field to the rear. Your officers are happy that this would not have a harmful impact on visual amenity. Issues around public health, Chair, are set out in the agenda papers, but again, this committee is familiar that where an ICNUP certificate is provided, there is no need for you to further consider issues of public health. All of the matters, Chair, are satisfactory and for the reasons set out in the report, we have recommended approval. Happy to answer any questions.
John?
Hello.
Why can't they share the other mast and why is there such a distance? I mean, we're going to end up with a series of totem poles all across the road.
Absolutely, councillor Radford, and this is something that we as officers are acutely aware of. We have challenged the operators on a number of different sites across the city. The primary reason for the height of these masts is to provide separation, horizontal separation between the different bandwidths that operate for telecommunications technology. In terms of the specific issue to this company, Telefonica and Vodafone, they have advisors that they use different suppliers, so they can't share with the other mast operators in the immediate vicinity, they require their own. Now again, we have challenged them on this on a number of occasions and we have tried to push back on a number of them. However, clearly where we as officers are satisfied in terms of the wider impact on visual amenity, I think we will then recommend them for approval, notwithstanding the wider mast sharing issue. And in this particular case, we are satisfied that even though there is a mast some 30 metres away and given its height, we are satisfied that in this particular case it is still satisfactory.
Yeah. Any other questions? So councillor Kemp?
Oh, okay, I'm just trying to... I'll tell you.
Councillor Kemp? Would you unmute?
No.
I think councillor Kemp, you're still muted.
Right, is that better?
That's better, Richard, go on with your question.
Okay, just a question to you or Mike. I put my hand up using the system, is that irrelevant now or do we just wave at you or shout at you?
Richard, I really do appreciate you putting the yellow hand up, but somebody came in, you know, audibly, so I took that first. I think you had your hand up first, actually, virtually, but I just have to manage the system as best I can. And I take somebody coming in audibly, somebody putting their virtual hand up or somebody putting their real hand up, and I manage it all as best I can, so carry on please.
I know it's very difficult, so perhaps if we all put our yellow hands up, it would make it easier for you.
It would make it easier, yes.
Chair, before we go any further... Councillor Kemp, just briefly to interject for benefit of the committee. Obviously, whenever there's a presentation displayed on screen, any member who wishes to ask a question at that point can please ask that you don't try to overtalk the officer, so that it's quite clear there's one person speaking. The reason for that also is then the chair and indeed all the members of the committee can't see clearly which member wants to speak at that point. So can members please refrain from speaking when presentations are on screen? Once those are off in a tiled window you're seeing now, it shows again. If you have the hand facility, please raise, as Richard's done amply. If you don't, please give an indication by indicating and the chair will bring you in accordingly. Otherwise, apologies and over to you, councillor Kemp.
Thank you very much for that clarity. The questions I want to ask have been raised by John, but relate to a whole series of technical questions which I've been given that I want to ask the applicant for. So can you tell me, Michael, if there is a representative of the applicants with us today?
Not today, no, councillor Kemp.
Right, well, in that case, because these also apply to the item relating to Brody Avenue, I would like to have both four, and I think it's item nine, deferred to allow us to make questions of the applicant over a whole series of questions, some of which have been raised in this particular case by councillor Thomas. So I don't know whether you're prepared to agree that, Chair. If you're not, then I'll raise some other issues.
Thank you, councillor Kemp. Just before I bring the chair in, obviously, if you wish to formally move a motion seeking to defer consideration of this application at this stage, that's entirely within your gift. However, obviously the same rules apply as do all the committees insofar as that will need to be seconded and obviously formal vote conducted. In terms of the latter item of business, we will deal with that when we come to that item, we'll take each item individually and its merits. So any such a motion at this stage would deal solely with this application.
Okay. But if the chair agrees it, I assume that we can just get on with it, we can just defer it, can't we?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Chair does not agree to a deferral of these masts, Richard. I mean, you come as an alternate, Steve hasn't been with us for some time, but we have in the past heard people come forward from the telecommunications industry. I also know from the history of our committees and those of the planning committee who are regularly here with us do know that our planning officers are constantly queried varying issues about telecommunications. Sometimes we get answers, sometimes we get changes, but I don't see that it would be appropriate on this occasion to defer. We've had a lot of queries answered in the past.
I just want to oppose this item. At some stage, we have to, as a council, draw up the merits and demerits of these masts and the locations that they're in. Whether or not we get a marginal advantage for some people going from 3G or 4G to 5G compared to the absolute mess they are making of our landscape, of our built environment, of our green environment, which local residents actually cherish. I think, I congratulate the officers in this case for reducing the height from 20 to 17 and a half metres, that's still way bigger than a length of a cricket pitch. It's overbearing, it's unsightly and it's probably unnecessary, particularly if we have next to it, within yards or metres, sorry, I'm a bit old fashioned, and another existing mast. It is not our job as a council to sort out disputes and difficulties between two different delivery companies. It's our job to make sure that everything works for our constituents. And I just think we have to say to the people who provide these things, sort yourselves out, don't leave a wreckage on our streets. So I oppose this application.
I'm now going to invite councillor Radford to come in. We've heard your comments, councillor Kemp. Councillor Radford? Hello, councillor Radford?
Unmute yourself, please, your microphone's muted again.
No, we still can't hear you, councillor Radford. You need to unmute.
Is it, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Right. Sorry, I don't know the protocols for using these gadgets before I'm told off again. Sorry for the delay, but I actually agree with Richard. I can't see why operators couldn't have put the second pole juxtaposition to the first pole. So you've now got two poles. At the end of the week, we could have a totem pole row blocking the fields view from West Derby. And it is a residential area essentially, Eaton Road, although there are a few commercial properties on the frontage. I think it's absolutely appalling and it doesn't seem to be planned out. There is an advantage in having poles in positions of high height for the visuality. So you'd think the poles would be on top of the hill, not partway down. So I'm going to actually say I think we should defer it on the merits of this particular case, because I can't see why they couldn't be closer to reduce the visible impact. I can't see why they're actually there rather than at the top of the fields, where in fact there would be a greater reception field. So I don't get it and I do think it's disproportionate, the impact. I'm sorry it may upset people, I'm not dissuaded by the officers making attempts, but at the end of the day, you know, it's, we've got an appalling one on Muirdev Avenue, which looks like a coffee dispensing machine. We seem to be putting them up everywhere with a sort of hit and miss approach. So I'm happy to vote with Richard for a deferral at least.
However, I don't think Richard has actually proposed the deferral as such.
I thought he had, sorry.
He asked the chair to agree it.
Ah, okay, well, if Richard wants to unmute a deferral formally then.
Over to you, Michael.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Radford, I believe, has now moved a valid motion to defer consideration of this particular application pending an invitation being extended to the operators and proposer of the mast to attend the next available planning committee and provide appropriate technical explanations as to the proposal, locations and requirements. Would that summarize accurately what yourself and councillor Kemp both agree in terms of the issues on this particular application? Thank you. Councillor Kemp, I believe you've already raised this issue already. Are you happy to second councillor Radford's motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Obviously, in terms of voting, I'm going to just conduct a brief vote now in terms of going briefly from member to member. So just to be clear, if you vote in favour of the amendment, the effect of that will be that you're seeking and agreeing it to be deferred. So with that in mind, firstly over to you, Chair, are you for, against or abstaining? Are your microphones on mute, Chair?
Oh.
Oh, it's better, that's clear now, sorry.
Against, no, it was not muted, I don't think.
Thank you, just didn't pick it up to begin with. Councillor Thompson?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Lovell? Anthony, you're on mute. That's better, that's clear, you're just your distance from the microphone, that's all. Councillor Conception?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Radford?
For.
Councillor Mabry?
Against.
Thank you. And councillor Cummings?
For.
Thank you. That concludes the vote in terms of voting members, I believe. Well, councillor Kennedy, you're coming back on screen now, that's better. Councillor Kennedy, your vote, please.
Against.
Thank you. Thank you, just you weren't on screen at that point, thank you, that's better. That concludes the vote therefore, and in terms of the voting members, we have three in favour and we have seven members against, no abstentions therefore. Your motion for, councillor Radford, are we now reverting to continuing to deal with this application?
Conception did have his virtual hand up, would you like to speak without owning?
Yes, Chair, thank you. We've had many of these applications and the rollout of 5G across the city. We've discussed on many occasions at this committee and I'm only looking at the national planning policy framework that we've all been thrown that we must abide by. And it says that planning authorities must determine applications on planning grounds only. And paragraph 12 says, "High quality, reliable communications infrastructure, essential for economic growth. Decisions should support the expansion of 5G and full fibre broadband connections." And the other point that you got to make in these applications is that it's driven, it's driven by people wanting 5G in residential areas. If people didn't want 5G, it wouldn't be rolled out. But we need to support the economic growth across the city and we take each application on its merits and on this particular one. I think that the officers have made the right recommendations, so I'm in support of the chair's recommendation.
Councillor Conception? There are no more virtual hands up, so unless I see anybody indicate, I'm going to hand back to our planning officer to sum up over this and then we will take the vote. And I hope the planning officer will mention the efforts that are always made by the planning department both to reduce height, to make sure we don't get duplication that's unnecessary. I think in this case it was necessary. So back over to you, John. I hope John's got back in, because I know he's been having some technical difficulties.
Yeah, can everybody hear and see me? I am back in, Chair. I do, getting kicked out for some reason, so my apologies, but I'm back here again. So thank you, Chair. So yeah, just to pick up on some of those points. Firstly, we always invite the representatives of the applicant to attend these meetings. Clearly, it's up to them as to whether or not they wish to attend. I think it is unfortunate that they don't attend these meetings to clarify the various issues that have been highlighted, but ultimately that is a matter for them and ultimately for this committee. The second point in relation to the technology, we have set out in the report the reasons why they can't mast share, that's set out in paragraphs 2.2 and 2.3, and hopefully that provides the clarification that members need. And then, as the chair has pointed out, your officers do frequently challenge the operators around this issue about mast sharing and about the heights of masts and we will continue to do that. But ultimately, it still comes to a matter of planning judgment as to the acceptability of these masts. And in this particular case, as I said earlier, your officers' view is that notwithstanding the mast some 30 metres away and the overall height of this mast, it is on its own considered an appropriate structure within the street scene. Now, that is a matter of judgment and clearly it is open to you as members to come to a different view on that, if you so wish. The only final point I would make, Chair, is in relation to the comments made by councillor Thomas in which she has requested that previous masts were painted green. You'll see from the report that we've not made that suggestion in relation to this particular application or indeed others that you've considered before. I think your officers' view is that certainly the colour of the mast should remain a fairly neutral sort of off-white colour, because that way they tend to blend in to the environment much better than if they are dark-coated colour. However, it is on occasion suitable to have the cabinets painted green. They can appear slightly softer. Again, in this particular case, I think your officers are satisfied with the colour that they are and do not consider that they need to be treated in any different colour than proposed. Hopefully that clarifies everything, Chair. Happy to answer any further questions you might have.
Councillor Cummings, I think you're indicating?
No, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Okay. So we'll move on to the vote. Can I move that the recommendation is approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Are there any amendments from members, otherwise we can move straight on to the vote on the chair's motion? No amendments? And just conduct a vote on that. So firstly, starting with you, Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Lovell?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Mabry?
Agreed.
Agreed, Michael.
Thank you, that's clear. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. And lastly, we have one further member to vote. I believe it's councillor Radford. Councillor Radford, can you hear us okay? Councillor Radford's connection appears to have ended, therefore we'll come back to councillor Radford for the next item of business, but otherwise, in terms of voting members' presence, the vote is eight in favour, one against. Councillor Kemp, you voted against, would you like your dissent recorded by name? Excellent, thank you. Thank you. With that in mind, the application is therefore approved on that basis and we move on to our next item of business, which is number five on today's agenda and relates to number 42, Chilwell Abbey Road in Liverpool 16, which is in Chilwell Ward. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. So on this one, we have a brief presentation and I would ask the case officer to comment on that and then we will have councillor Carroll's story, who's registered to address us, objecting to the application. And councillor Story will have up to three minutes to address us today. So over to the case officer, please, Stuart.
Are you, Chair, just waiting for my video to kick in? Can everyone see and hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you've got a detailed report in front of you. This is an application for a restaurant in the Chilwell Triangle. There are a number of existing varied uses in this local shopping parade, including a number of late-night uses that open until 11 o'clock. The application involves some physical work to the premises, which I understand have been undertaken. And there was originally a flu proposed, however, the flu system's now been changed to a carbon precipitation system, which means there's no external flu needed. So in terms of the physical aspects of the scheme, we're happy that it's appropriate in a commercial area and it won't affect the amenity of any residents. Therefore, we move to the use, the use of units within local shopping parades for night-time uses are considered acceptable subject to matters of residential amenity and highway safety. As I've said, in this instance, there are a number of uses in the triangle that open till 11 and therefore we consider that any activity associated with the restaurant would not be so significant over and above that which already exists that it would cause any significant issues to existing residents. Restaurants by their nature don't tend to attract the younger fraternity who perhaps do give rise to antisocial behaviour and we know residents have had some concerns about that, but we're satisfied that this kind of use is an appropriate use within a local shopping parade. In terms of the highway side of things, clearly my colleague, Andy Dingle, can expand on this, it needs to be, but this is a local restaurant where we would expect levels of footfall to come from the local area where people would walk. There's parking within laybys immediately outside the premises and, you know, his team have carefully examined the application and are happy that there will be no undue detriment to highway safety or on-street parking as a result of this proposal, given its scale and size. So in light of that, Chair, we're happy to recommend approval, but happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Can I invite Richard Kemp to speak? Yes, Richard, carry on, you're still on mute.
Right, yes, just a question of the residents above this accommodation. As Stuart will recall, when we had an application on Penny Lane about five years ago, we rejected it on the grounds that a restaurant underneath a... on the grounds that a restaurant underneath a flat occupied by residents, which had no collection with the premises, was unsatisfactory, would cause a poor environment for the people living in the apartment. And when that decision was agreed by the council and then went to appeal, the planning inspectors agreed with us. So I'm not quite sure here why we can protect one lot of residents, though I'm glad we did, but not another set of residents. It doesn't seem to be consistent in planning terms.
Thank you Chair. The only thing I must admit, Richard, I can't remember the actual case that you're talking about. So forgive me in that respect. All I can advise is that each case is dealt with on its merits. As I've said, in this particular area, there are a number of existing uses that go on till half ten, eleven o'clock. So there's already activity in and around and underneath these apartments. So the question we ask ourselves is, would any activity associated with this significantly increase that which already exists to such an extent that it would be detrimental to the amenity? Now, that's clearly a subjective view, but we consider that given the late night operation uses in that area, any additional activity that this would create would not be so significant so as to warrant a refusal. So that's specific to this particular application.
Thank you. And I see there doesn't seem to be any other questions. So I'm going to hand over now to Councillor Carroll's story, who has up to three minutes to address the committee. Councillor Story, please.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Carol. Carry on.
Can you see me? It doesn't matter whether you see me or not, probably better.
I can't see you, but I can hear you.
And as a local council, obviously representing the views of the residents, I know there have been quite a number of concerns regarding the application. I have several concerns. I think one of them has been laid. The problem with the extraction fan system, that residents would like assurances that there will be no fumes or smells emanating from the premises. That's the first thing. Secondly, there are, there are residents living over the retail outlets. And the other retailers, the other, sorry, the other restaurants that are around there are quite, are the quiet restaurants. And so they don't, there's not an awful lot of footfall there. And so that's why probably, you know, there wouldn't be any problems with them. This area where Cyrus Hubbert actually is, is quite a problem for antisocial behaviour. And I'm just concerned that the length of time it's open till will, won't help that. This is also a takeaway as well as a restaurant. So the users that hang around are sort of 16 to 18. And they're in and out of the Abbey Friar, which is next door to this particular restaurant. So hopefully, if, I mean, if it does go through, that the owners will help to sort of prevent that antisocial behaviour going on that is going on at present. The people who are living above, there are elderly, people with young couples, and the proposed hours opening till each day, I feel is unacceptable. Local residents shouldn't have to suddenly have late night disturbance. The chip shop next door actually closes at 10pm. And I think that would be a much more sensible time, closing time for this takeaway restaurant, Cyrus Hubbert. Thirdly, there's a lot of parking problems in the area. And there's overspill into the residential areas around. So one more restaurant takeaway will, I suspect that. The, well, finally, I must say, I presume it's going to go through because the restaurant is actually ready to start now, which I found quite surprising. But they, they build it ready to go, you know, hoping that it would get planning permission. So I can't see it not going through. It does look better than it did before. But I think if anything, I presume it won't be stopped. But if, if anything, if you could reduce the hours to close at 10 o'clock, that would be much appreciated by residents. That's me. Thank you.
Councillor Story. And we have a question from councillor Lovell. Carry on answering.
Thank you Chair. I'd just want to come in Stuart, on the point which councillor Story raised around the time of the licence. Obviously, it's a very active Chilwell Triangle. There's several restaurants already. Can you just shed some light on, do those restaurants already have a licence up to 11pm? Or is it, or is it 10 or even earlier?
And thank you Chair. If I can, if I can just deal with the issues that were raised in order from councillor Story and then come to yourself, then there'll be a complete. So in terms of the fume system, as I explained before, they moved to a carbon precipitation system, which has been through environmental health. They were happy that that's an appropriate system. It negates the need for any external flu systems, though all the fumes are contained within the actual machinery itself or the equipment itself. But there should be no fumes or venting that should affect anybody. In terms of the takeaway facility, the majority of restaurants are permitted or can do without the need for any further consent to operate a takeaway element. I'm sure many of us have gone to a Chinese restaurant or an Indian restaurant and ordered online or over the phone and gone and collected. So that's nothing unusual. But the main, the main state of the actual premises is an actual sit down restaurant. In terms of the parking, again, I think I touched on it before, it's a small scale restaurant. There's parking bays outside. We would expect the majority of footfall to come from local residents. So hopefully, people will be walking predominantly. But highways are happy that any, any parking associated with it or demand associated with it could be accommodated without detriment to the highway network. And we're happy that it wouldn't affect the amenity of residents. In terms of undertaking any works before planning permission being granted, this is clearly something that we as officers don't condone. The applicant was advised of the risks he was taking. And it's by no means a done deal. Just because somebody undertakes work, that's purely a matter for the committee. And then finally, in relation to the hours, I can direct you to the committee report, which specifically deals with that and lists the, I think it's paragraph 2.6, and it lists all the restaurants in the, in the area, which vary from 10.30 to 10 to 11. So we're benchmarking with all the units that exist in this area. So therefore, we consider it reasonable that this premises should be able to operate to other restaurant closing hours. And that any activity would not significantly impact over and above that which already exists, Chair.
Thank you Stuart. And I'd like to invite councillor Cummings to speak next, followed by councillor Kemp.
Thank you Chair. And just to end on the last point that Stuart raised about the time. I'm of the assumption, this is the question really, I'm of the assumption that would be an issue for licensing committee rather than the planning committee. And in regard to supporting the restaurant, which is, you know, about economic activity within the area, that is something to support in itself anyway. So that's all I wanted to say, nothing else.
Thank you councillor Cummings. Councillor Kemp.
Thank you Chair. A number of points really about traffic. Although I would just make a general point that 23,000 jobs have been lost in the last seven days in the hospitality industry. And 1,700 or 1,300 drinks in Pizza Express, we ought to be very careful, I think, as a council, about the encouragement we make to more hospitality, as one of the existing ones we've got are falling on their knees. But my question is really, I don't know whether this is for Stuart or the head of highways and transportation, relate to item 3.1. The head of highways and transportation considers it's a high proportion of visitors to the proposed restaurant will arrive on foot. Now, there are three ways that the head of transport could have come to that conclusion, because there is clear guidance from the Department of Transport, that if you have a restaurant surrounded by a thousand houses, 10% of them will use it once a week or whatever it is. Or he's conducted a survey of potential users of the restaurant, so he knows what the local people are saying, or he knows the area well at 10 o'clock at night. I'd be interested to know which of those three it is. Because if the answer to all those is negative, then he's guessing. And the last point is directed to Stuart. And again, it comes back to cumulative effect of small scale planning applications. On three occasions on nearby Alton Road, the officers have told us that there will be a small amount of problem for traffic created by this specific application. But when you have three of them, and if we'd have been considering them together, it would have been a big increase in traffic. So when the cumulative become over the top? Thank you Chair.
We actually have another councillor with a question. That's councillor Marat. I will take the third question before I hand back to Stuart and possibly to Andy Dingle to answer them. And I'll sum up.
Can I have the word?
No, it's Billy next. That's Malcolm's voice, is it?
It is. I would like a quick word.
Well, can I take Billy next? And then I'll take you Malcolm. Okay. Billy next, because he's been indicating for a long time.
Thank you Chair. Stuart, regarding councillor Story's comments about residents worries and all that, like, exactly how many objections were to this application?
We'll get that answered for you. I'll just, councillor Kennedy, I'm just going to go back to Stuart.
I think we should get rid of the argument that because there's been a lot of jobs lost in the hospitality industry, which is absolutely tragic and a function of the current situation, that we should therefore seek to prevent another restaurant opening that might create jobs. It seems an argument that should be used for encouraging new businesses rather than discouraging them. On the other hand, well, in addition to that, that's not even a planning issue to say yes or no. The business decisions of the business owner, of the person who's starting the business are a matter for the speculation that is necessary in anybody who wishes to, to create a new business. So I think we should shove that argument to one side, as it is totally irrelevant to the planning committee, but it doesn't make any logical sense in any, in any way, anyway. So I know this area well. I used to live just around the corner. I'm taking the view that the encouragement of the local eating facility is something to be congratulated, not, not deplored.
Now, I know it's getting a bit cumbersome here Stuart, but I think that in fact councillor Kennedy has answered one of the points already. We also have councillor Joe Dunn now indicating. I'm assuming that he's come in instead of councillor Radford. So over to you councillor Dunn.
No, it's Steve Radford. It's, I'm using off John's, Joe's computer.
Oh, I see Steve. Will you come in with your comment or question then?
All it was, I totally agree with Malcolm. We shouldn't be restricting trade, highly a liberal concept, for, because as an employment guard, we should actually encourage investment. Sorry Malcolm, accusing you of being liberal. But secondly, can I get back to the point of timing? I'm sorry I haven't read the papers in detail. Stuart's guided us that some of the venues are closing at half ten and others at 11. So the actual application here, is it for 11 standard? Because I thought that was standard in residential areas, takeaways, most of my residential takeaways close at 11. So I think there is a benefit in keeping some consistency of a level playing field.
Now, I'm just going to sum up what seemed to be the main points made here. The one about the opposite hospitality industry, I think it's adequately been addressed by other councillors. But we've got some questions here about highways and parking. We also had the point made that does the highways department know what the parking is like later at night? We've also had points made about cumulative effects. We've had a specific question about the number of objectives, which is in the notes actually, but maybe Stuart would be kind enough to include that in his comments, plus the number of supporters. So over to you Stuart.
Okay, I'll deal with the bits that I can comfortably deal with and perhaps defer or leave the parking bit to the end. And hopefully, Andy Dingle will jump in and answer that question. In terms of cumulative impact, again, it's a subjective view. It's facts and degree. This is a small scaled unit. It's not a massive amount of covers. To the actual level of activity that a restaurant of this size would produce, we don't believe is significant. Clearly, if it was a massive Wetherspoons or something like that, that would be a different animal. And so you look at each one on its merits. But in this particular case, it's a small scaled unit that coupled with the other small scaled units that exist and operate on the triangle. And, you know, again, we're of the view, your officers are of the view, that the activity associated with this would not be significantly over and above that which exists already. And in terms of where that line is drawn, that is a matter for members. But as I said before, it's really facts and degree depending on the size of the unit that you're being asked to. In this instance, we believe it doesn't have any significant impact. And in terms of the number of objections, we've had, as the Chair's pointed out in the papers, we had 12 objections and six letters of support. So there's a mix, mix of objection and support from local residents. And I think that was me done. So Andy, if you could jump in on the parking, that would be helpful.
Okay, thanks Chair. It's Andy Dingle, Highways Development Control Team Lead, Liverpool City Council. We've assessed this application, as we do all applications carefully. In terms of the proposal, it's a relatively small in scale restaurant, cafe that'll operate throughout the day and early evening, or later on into the evening. You know, our view is that this is unlikely to generate any significant levels of vehicle traffic to the area and any significant extra demand parking. It will bring extra vehicles to the area and select the demand, but it won't be significant to the extent that it will cause either highway safety issues or congestion on the surrounding highway network. I think the other point to make as well is, you know, this is a local restaurant. Our expectation, our experience is that this tends to, these tend to draw trade from the local area. People tend to walk to these types of local restaurants and cafes. And those who do travel from further afield, you know, there's a range of alternative modes that they could use, such as taxis, public transport, you know, it's on a key cycle corridor if people choose to travel in that way. So there's a range of different options, which mean that people aren't reliant on using the car to travel to the site. And therefore, the demands for car parking in the area aren't going to be exacerbated significantly. That will cause any concern for us. So in summary, we're comfortable with the proposal. And we've got no objections to it.
Thank you both our officers. So are there any questions about what they've had to say before I move to the vote? No, well, can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
I'd like to see, subjects that have been seconded of course, to move an amendment that the hours be restricted to 10 o'clock.
Michael, over to you. We have an amendment.
Thank you Chair.
I haven't got the papers. Ollie, what time is it being proposed in the application for clarity?
11 o'clock.
Which is consistent to most residential areas. Yeah.
Yes. And to other restaurants in that area too.
Fine.
Okay, thank you Chair. Thank you councillor Kemp, noting that councillor Kemp is seeking to move an amendment to reduce the terminal closing hour for the operation from 11pm to 10pm. Do any members of the committee wish to second that amendment? No? In which case, the amendment falls and we will revert to the Chair's motion to approve the application. Again, I'll conduct the vote in sequence. So in terms of members visible, yourself, Chair firstly.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat.
Ollie, agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Radford.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy. Thank you, councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Kemp.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Lavelle.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings.
Agreed.
Councillor Hanson.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception. Thank you. And lastly councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you. Just for purposes of clarity, the vote is nine members in favour, one against, which was councillor Kemp. No abstentions, councillor Kemp, would you like a dissent recorded by name? That's done, thank you, the application is therefore approved on that basis. We will now move on to our next item of business with the agreement to the chair and members, which is item number six on today's agenda, and which relates to number sixty-three, Portman Road, Liverpool fifteen in Pickton Ward. Over to you, Chair.
On this one, we don't have any speakers registered. So we are going to see a presentation and then hear from our case officer.
Thank you Chair, that presentation is now coming up on screen, it's visible for everyone, if you can bring in the case officer now.
Yes, John? John, are you having technical difficulties again?
Chair, if we can bear with me, I believe Mr Hayes has briefly had to leave and is rejoining, so.
I think he's having technical problems, Michael.
He's calling.
Here he is, yes, we can hear you now, John.
Apology, I really don't know what's happening this morning, so I do apologise. Chair, obviously, this is a type of application which committees are very familiar with. Probably the applicant is also familiar, number of applications being received by this particular applicant for HMOs in and around the Pickton area. You'll see from the description, Chair, it's the type of application, again, that you're familiar with, conversion of a property to a seven bed HMO facilitated by extensions to the property, including a single storey at the back, a dormer to the rear and some roof lights at the front. And obviously, that allows for the use of the roof space. Chair, I don't want to take you through all the issues, because this committee has heard them on many occasions. What I do want to do though, however, is report a late representation from councillors, Nicholas, which has been supported by councillor Smaider. I'll just go through the various bullet points, the concerns are about the, essentially about the proliferation of HMOs in the area and the concerns that many local residents have that their voices are no longer being heard through the planning application process. It's considered to be a target by developers to develop their property portfolios, but that obviously has a detrimental effect. And the key points that are being made by councillor Nicholas and Smaider are the noise and disturbance, which have a negative impact on health and wellbeing, the blocking the sun from the gardens due to the physical extensions, a higher proportion of transient residents potentially leading to loss of community cohesion and undermining existing community services. Areas of higher HMO concentrations becoming less popular with local residents, with many properties taken out of the owner occupier markets. Proliferation of properties vacant at certain points of the year and the impact on crime, local business viability and so on, as a result of the number of properties temporarily vacant for long periods. And the members both ask that the planning application is therefore refused. Chair, I'll happily go through the issues if members have any questions, but I'm not sure that I can add anything useful to what's a very familiar type of application.
So are there any questions for our case officer? Or any points that people want to raise? I can't see any, oh yes, wait a minute, I have councillor Radford. Councillor Radford, would you like to make your point?
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you now, Steve.
Yeah, smashing, sorry about that, it's not familiar with these gadgets. John, on your experience, how much, can you just go through how much density there is in the application and what the current status of the building is?
So the current use of the property, through you Chair, my understanding is that the current use of the property is as a family dwelling house, or the last known use was a family dwelling house. As this committee is aware, you can convert a dwelling house to a property of multiple occupation for six people or fewer without the need for planning permission. The reason I emphasise that point is it then becomes quite difficult to establish precise numbers of properties that are in use as HMOs. Again, this committee will be aware that there is some work because of concerns around the concentration of HMOs in certain parts of the city. Work is being done to look at Article Four directions in this and other parts of the city. And the local plan recognises that this is one of the areas where there is that over concentration. So it's certainly over ten percent. But I don't, I'm afraid, have that information to hand councillor Radford. It's a piece of work that is currently being undertaken by colleagues in housing to help support the case for an Article Four direction in this and other areas to then control the amount of HMOs, the smaller HMOs.
Councillor Kennedy, you're indicating?
Yeah, just check, yes, I've my sounds on. Just to check whether the status of the extension and whether that is permitted development within the, or whether that, are they seeking permission for the extension? And just a general question, is it felt that the increasing number of applications in Pickton that I've noticed is one of the reasons in the view of the planning officers, the fact that we've made it more difficult to get this kind of application through in the surrounding areas such as Green Bank, for instance?
Just in relation to the first point, in relation to whether or not this is permitted development, obviously, it's not specifically referenced in the report, but almost invariably, the extensions that are provided as part of these developments are permitted. We've had a number of discussions with the key operators in and around the Pickton and the Dales area to try and encourage them to make applications that include these elements, so it avoids any sort of ambiguity or concern by us as officers. We can ensure that they are picked up through the application process and obviously then inform residents of the full scope of the works that are involved, and the developers have done that. But yeah, having looked at those plans on screen, I would certainly say that they certainly appear to be permitted development. And the second question, I think councillor Kennedy, forgive me if I'm wrong, but I think you're asking the question is, has there been an additional concentration because of pushing back in other parts? Yes, I would argue that certainly since the Article Four that was introduced for the Dales area, there has been a move to invest in this part of the city for the HMO investor. So whilst it's discouraged investment in the Dales area, we've certainly seen a growth in parallel to that in this part of South Liverpool. Hopefully, that answers your questions, but happy to respond if you have any further.
Malcolm, are you happy with that? Because councillor Cummings has a question.
Yes, I'm happy with the answer.
Councillor Cummings, would you like to come in now, please?
Chair, it's not a question, it's just a statement to make. I recognise that HMOs do go on, but I'm absolutely not happy with the saturation of these HMOs, especially in Pickton, Chubruke, Old Swan, Kensington. We have our hands tied on these applications, but you know, something needs to be done in local governments about the spreading of these HMOs and the amount of the HMOs that can be accepted in each particular ward. We are, as I say, our hands are tied, but I have great reservations about these planning applications. That's all I have to say.
Councillor Cummings, I won't hand back to the planning officer over that one, because we have debated this before and we do need our local plan to be ratified by authorities higher than us. That would be part of the picture, and of course, the housing department, as has been mentioned, is now considering more Article Four directions. But in the absence of any move in that direction, can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Can I oppose, Chairman?
Yes, carry on.
Can I move the objections that the ward councillors be supported by the committee and the application be rejected? I'll second that.
Okay, so over to you, Michael Jones.
Thank you Chair, councillor Radford, for purposes of clarity, could you elaborate in terms of the reasons for refusal, just so we have a very clear?
The reasons have actually been articulated by the ward councillors. There was instability for the community, impact of the extension, destabilisation of the area, excess HMOs in the vicinity already, detrimental impact on the sustainable community.
Thank you councillor Radford, does any member wish to second that amendment, please?
I'd like to second, Mike.
Is that you councillor Lavelle?
Yeah.
Thank you. Just to summarise for purposes of debate, we now have a valid amendment, which we will shortly vote on, the substance of which being that the amendment is calling for the application to be refused on the basis that the proposed development constitutes an overdevelopment of the application site, would constitute further exacerbation of community instability arising from transient occupiers of this type of property and development, that the scale of the proposed extensions were excessive and have a significant overdominant impact on adjacent residential occupiers to the detriment of their residential amenity, and that the additional HMO would, by virtue of its presence, have an additional substantial negative impact in terms of its cumulative impacts. I believe that summarises broad terms what was proposed, therefore with in mind. I'll just conduct a brief vote, so firstly councillor Lavelle, as you're visible, your vote please. Councillor Cummings.
Oh, and can you reference my vote, please?
Come to that shortly, thank you councillor Radford, please.
Four.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Kennedy, just repeat. I think you're on mute, councillor Kennedy.
Sorry, against.
Thank you, Chair councillor O'Brien. Sorry, Trish, I can't hear your vote, just read it, please.
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Conception.
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Marat.
Against.
Councillor Hanson.
Against.
And lastly councillor Thompson.
Against.
Thank you, for purposes of clarity, the voting on the amendment was four members voting in favour and six members voting against, therefore the amendment falls. Councillors Lavelle, Radford, Cummings and Kemp. Your dissent, your support of the amendment will be recorded in that regard. We now move to the substantive motion proposed by the Chair, which was to approve the application. And with that in mind, again, same procedure, councillor Lavelle, your vote please.
Four.
Thank you, councillor Cummings.
Cummings.
Councillor Radford.
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Four.
Councillor O'Brien.
Three.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp.
Go.
Thank you. Councillor Conception.
Three.
Councillor Marat.
Four.
And councillor Hanson.
Four.
Thank you, for purposes of clarity, the voting on this resolution was seven members in favour, three members voting against. For the three members who voted against, would you like your names recorded as dissenting directly?
Yes, yep.
Bear with me a moment while I take a note of that. And just to confirm, the result of the vote is therefore that the application is approved on that basis, as the vote has pronounced. We'll now move on to our next item of business, which is item number seven on today's agenda, and which relates to numbers one three nine to one four one A, Granby Street in Liverpool eight, which is in Princess Park Ward. Just to bring the Chair in and to confirm that we have a number of speakers for this particular application, however, and for the benefit of Chair and those members present, the first two speakers are Mr Worsame and Mr Khan. I don't believe our presence, but we have issued formal invites to the contact details which they have invited and provided to us. So over to you, Chair.
I'm sorry, I did mute myself. You need to unmute yourself.
Just bear with us briefly, Chair.
Sorry about that, I did mute myself. Yeah, so we actually have a presentation from a representative of the applicant, but you've already said to me, Committee clerk, that Mr Marsan Hassan is not here, or is it Hassan Marsan? So I'm not sure if there is somebody now who's going to come in and speak for him. I don't know, can you give me some clarity on that?
Hi, I'm Ishmael Sala.
I'm just going to mute everyone briefly, just to restore audio. Thank you, just to, I believe a gentleman was just called to speak, in which case could the individual consent, please unmute your microphone and you can please talk to the presentation, thank you.
Hello, hi, my name is Ishmael Sala. And I'm representing this application.
Apologies, Mr Sala, I'm going to have to ask if you could either reduce your volume or if you have an external speaker next to you, please ensure that's turned off, just so it doesn't give feedback to your microphone, if you can. Just bear with us a moment, ladies and gentlemen, Mr Sala will be back on very shortly to continue with his introduction of the presentation.
Can everybody hear me, please?
That is fine, Mr Sala, you can carry on now, we can hear you clearly.
Yeah, my name is Ishmael Sala and I'm representing this application. I'm part of the committee for the mosque and pack force. And we've been in this building since 2009. And we pitched the building in 2008. And we completed the building with in 2009. And we were using six Jerman Street. And we've opened one three nine, one four one Granby Street in 2010. And we've been here for the past eleven years, where we use it as a culture and after school studies. And we conduct obviously prayer and congress five times a day in this. And when we put the application in, we obviously anticipate that, you know, everything would be okay. And since 1995, obviously, we work with different organisation, with obviously being in different centres, and we've never encountered any issue or any problems with our neighbours. And obviously, the object that was put in by the Deep Christian Centre opposite us, and I find that as a weak. and I find that as we've been here for nearly 10 years, we've had no ongoing attention, nor did we ever had any encounter any traffic or any noise problem since we've been here. And obviously we were surprised that the application obviously was obviously put to the committee to approve. Yeah, that's me then.
Well, I think when we hear from our case officer, it's not a question of approval, it's a question of is there an existing use that is 10 years or more? But I believe we have some further speakers that would like to come on. For instance, Mohammed Hassan, would he like to speak now for up to three minutes?
Yes, Mohammed Hassan is the Imam, who's been here for 10 years, so I'll pass him to you.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning.
Hello.
All of you.
Hello, I'm welcome. Would you like to carry on now, Mohammed Hassan?
Actually, give just on a two minute. In just two minutes, I want to, just to give you the, to be honest, the biography of the Parents' Committee for Children's Education, which is back force. So back force providing after-school study programme. And back force has established since 1995 and providing after-school study programme and cultural classes for Somali children in Liverpool City. And raising Somali parents' knowledge and awareness of educational system and encouraging them to have an active role in their children's education, enhancing and improving Somali children's education achievement. Liverpool City Council supported and provided funding from 1998 up to 2021. I was nominated as a project coordinator from 2002 to 2021. We also worked together with Liverpool Charity Ethnic Minority and Trafflers Achievement, Kingsley Community, St Penant Primary School, St Margaret Primary School, St Silas Primary School and BSS Gateway. And we did not encounter any problems and we never unexpectedly be faced with or experienced some things hostile or difficult. Liverpool City Council funding cuts in 2012. That has impacted back force operational levels. However, we have managed to deliver minimum level of services. What made this possible was generous support from the parents and young people in Liverpool. In conclusion, the Somali parents alongside with the committee raised money and decided as a trustee to restore the property of 6 German Street and 139 141 Granby Street and make it ready to be used. This building is a three-storey house, which was previously used as a local post office. It is a combination of three property with 6 German Street and 139 141 Granby Street. From mid-2009, we started to provide some services to the young people and adults and perform it barely as temporary places at German Street side. And I was nominated as Imam at that time. So from the mid of 2009 up to 2014, we using temporarily, temporary places as, we performed it as, we used it as a mosque and we support for the children at that time. But we officially established for 139, 141 on 2014. In general, the building was completed 2010. But in particular, we officially established the mosque on 2014. And I was the Imam of the mosque at that time, from 1990 to 2014. But 2014, we officially opening, established the building as a mosque and the base of Parents' Committee for Children's Education. But there was a computer errors. That mentioned it, we moving to the building on 2011. That was the computer errors. But we officially using on that part in 6 German Street because it is, it is two parties phases. 6 German Street and 139 141 Granby Street. 69 German Street was the base that we use from the mid of 2009. In particularly, we using the upstairs of the building for the daily activity, including the prayer and sometimes when the people coming to here to provide them education like cultural education, Somali culture, British culture, how to pray, how the Muslim people studying to pray. But in conclusion, we officially starting this side, 139 141 Granby Street on June 2014.
Does that conclude your remarks then?
Yeah, yeah, I conclude my remark.
Now, I did have a Mr Caleb Khan registered. Does he need to come in or not?
Sorry?
We also had a Mr Caleb Khan registered.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Was he going to come in or not?
He's in the waiting room.
He's in the waiting room, yes.
Would he like to speak now, Mr Caleb Khan? If you are there, you aren't out to speak, you are registered.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
He was in the waiting room.
Chair, Mr Khan is not actually present in the meeting.
Okay.
Everyone who's in the waiting room has been permitted to access the meeting.
But well, all the people that were registered have now been allowed to speak. So do any members of the committee have any questions?
All right, all right.
Are there any questions? Yes. Can I have councillor Steve Radford?
Just for clarity, there clearly does seem to be a pattern of usage at the premises for some significant time. During that time, has there been any impact complaints coming during the last 10 years?
Well, I will get your question answered for you, but you do realise that all we've been asked to comment on at this planning committee is whether there's been continuous use for over 10 years. But can I have an answer from you? Have there been any...
The reason I'm asking that is if there was...
Just tell that one, Mr Hassan.
...problem, we would have had complaints.
And we've, since we've been here, we've had no complaints from neighbours or any other businesses in the area regarding the use of the building or traffic-wise or noise-wise, we've received no complaints. And because obviously we majority live in the Granby Triangle area and the Princess Park Ward area, we are all obviously in one community. So we, when we obviously purchased the building, we obviously to benefit the community and obviously to be part of society. So we have not received no complaints, nor from the council or from neighbours.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And councillor Cummings? Go ahead with your question councillor Cummings. Councillor Cummings, I think you're muted. Would you unmute, please?
Thanks, Chair. I've noticed that the third speaker is in the room there. So if the third speaker wants to talk, please give him the opportunity. That's all.
Councillor Cummings, with respect, I have invited all the people who are registered to speak. Do you have any other question?
No.
Okay, councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Chair. Mine was just a question of clarification as well. When you were telling us the timeline of your use of the building, you kept referring to number 6 German Street. Do I understand correctly that that's actually the same building that you just, there are two different entrances. There is an entrance on German Street and an entrance on Granby Street. Is that correct?
Yes, the building obviously has two entrances. So, and obviously, there's, because obviously it was a class and 139 to 141 was the main entrance, because this was a post office. And 6 German Street was a flat. But when we obviously purchased the building, we were using it in 2009 on the entrance of 6 German Street. So obviously it's the same building, but obviously it has two addresses.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you councillor Thompson. And if I could just be clear. So when we have somebody saying that 139 to 141's entrance did not seem to be in use before 2014, it's possible that the building could have been in use but only its upper floor and that floor was then accessed from 6 German Street. Am I correct?
Yes, but the building work was completed in 2010. And obviously with the Google picture, you look at the building, the work was completed. But while we were doing the work on Granby side, we had access to use from 6 German Street. We go up through this, there's only go through, obviously, because the building is a three-storey building. So while we were fixing the front on Granby side, we were accessing it through 6 German Streets.
Thank you. And I now have a question from councillor Radford again, I think. Unless you haven't turned up the yellow hand.
Sorry, if I didn't realise I had, no, I'm fine, totally calm.
All right. So thank you very much for that, Mr Hassan and Mr Sala. I'm going to hand over to our case officer now.
Chair, just to intervene, we have one further speaker, if I may, an objector, who is Dr Oakon, who is present and ready to address us.
All right then, if you could come in. I don't have his name written down.
It's Dr Pantan Oakent, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Doctor. Would you like to come in?
Yes, can you hear me?
You can, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I thank you very much for the opportunity. I just want to state some facts about 139 and to 141A Granby Street. First of all, it's directly opposite 150 to 152 Granby Street, which is the building that houses the church, the New Life International Mission. It's been a church building for about 70 years. There is an application dated 11th of August 2009. And the number of the application is 09F/1678. I think on the 11th of August of that year, an application was made for the proposed use of the building which we're referring to, which has two entrances, one from German Street and the other one from Granby Street, as a community centre. And there were four reasons for the objection to that application. I didn't have the time to actually go through all of it. But the number of the application is 09F/1678. And this was in 2009. The application was made on 11th of August 2009 and it was refused on the 2nd of October 2009. I just want to state here that, you know, two of my colleagues were supposed to be here, but unfortunately they're not, they were, they sent in their email late. But they have written testimonies to the fact that having been in the church, the New Life International Mission for, you know, decades, there wasn't any activity at 139 141A Granby Street before 2015. In fact, it was actually boarded up. So if I may, just read what Mr Nana said. "I am in a very strong position to comment on the bargaining situation at 139 to 141A Granby Street. I have been worshipping regularly at the Immanuel Holiness Church, which is the building 150 to 152 Granby Street during my leave study period of my Seafarion profession as far back as 1982." And it goes on to say that prior to 2015, the said property, 139 to 141A Granby Street, was boarded and was not inhabited. And there is another testimony here by Pastor Theo Chandor, who is the resident pastor. And he says here that, you know, he arrived from Nigeria in October 2013. On arrival, he did not notice any use of 139 to 141A as described. And he began noticing work on the building between late 2014 and mid 2015. I have to say that, you know, one of our primary concerns is that in that area, in the Granby Triangle, there is a mosque on Margrave, Margrave Road. So if this building, which has been used, I suppose, for other purposes, is converted to a mosque, then we're going to have, you know, traffic congestion and there will be parking constraints. So that is our, you know, concern with regard to the application to make 139 to 141A a mosque. Now, if it is to be a community training centre, you know, up to this point in time, you know, we've not really had any problems with our neighbours. And that is the points that I, those are the points that I would like to present. Thank you very much.
Chair, you're on mute, please, just to unmute your microphone.
Are there any questions for Dr Pantan Oakent, please? I do have Ishmael, I can't read the next bit, Sala raising, but we can't have questions, I'm afraid, unless it's from a member of the planning committee. So I do have councillor Steve Radford. Would you like to come in now, Steve?
I don't think Steve has taken his hand down.
So who's speaking now? Is that Anthony?
Yeah.
Did you just have a question, Anthony?
No, I just think Steve doesn't have to take his hand down.
He just hasn't taken his virtual hand down, okay. Are there any other questions? All right, well, I'm going to now hand over to our planning officer, who's going to explain that we've got to determine this on the balance of probabilities. We're only being asked whether we think the building has been in continuous use for over 10 years.
Thank you, Chair. Can everyone see and hear me?
I can hear you, Stuart, I can't see you.
Okay, camera is on.
We can see now, thank you, Stuart.
Okay. And just before I start, Trish, I've got one late objection that I'd like, I've got to read out so that members are aware of this representation. So I'll just read this out to the committee. This is from Theophilus Titus Chandor. Says, "I write to confirm that the use of 139 to 141 Granby Street is for less than 10 years. I am the resident pastor of the New Life International Mission 150 to 152 Granby Street. I was employed by the church for this position and I resumed my new function on the 1st of October 2013. I had arrived from Nigeria as Minister of Religion, granted certificate sponsorship by the church. On arrival, I did not notice any use of 139 to 141A as described. We began noticing..." We began noticing work on the building between late 2014 and mid 2015. The windows of the building were boarded up prior to the renovation. My work required me coming to the premises at least from Monday to Wednesday, then Friday to Sunday. This made me well aware of what was going on at the premises. It was after the work finished that I, along with our other members, noticed people patronising the building. As Granby Market continued every first Saturday of the month, activities increased there with observance of prayers on Fridays. Unless the learning centre opened indoors for the first few years, we only noticed the use of 131 to 141A Granby Street entrance from 2015, after renovation was carried upon it." That's that representation, Chair. And so in terms of the actual application itself, as you quite rightly point out, this is a slightly unusual one. There are no planning policies for members to consider here, so there's no impact from the scheme that you're being asked to consider. What you are being asked to consider or to make a view or take a view on is that on the balance of probabilities from the evidence that you've read and heard, was the use of the premises or has the premises been used, that you stated, for a continuous period of 10 years? That's the question before you, but based on the evidence that you've read and heard, and it's on the balance of probabilities. I'm sure Mike or Roger will jump in if I've missed anything here. But that's what members are asked to make the decision on. That's why it's an open recommendation, because it's an evidential test. So it's really back to the members to discuss or take a view as to whether they consider the use has been there for a continuous period of 10 years.
Chair, if I could come in.
I'd like to invite Councillor Kennedy to speak.
Yeah, my reading of the reports meant that there was only really one factor that we had to take into consideration, and that was, had the premises been in such operation since at least 2010 or before? The question of whether it was a certain kind of facility was irrelevant. However, we've heard evidence that the mosque was established in 2014. So what I'm asking really is, the lawful use we are required to adjudicate on, the complete use of that facility? I mean, it seems clear to me that there's one building, and whether the entrance on Granby Street was being used, the building was being used by the other entrance. However, if the mosque was not established until 2014, then the building hasn't been in use as a mosque since 2014. So how crucial is each factor of that building being used? Or is it just that that building was being used?
Chair, if I could come in here, it's Roger Mann, Legal Services. The application is for educational, cultural and place of worship uses. And with these applications, it's slightly different to a normal... Quite different to a normal planning application, where you either refuse the whole or approve the whole. In this case, they need to approve each element separately. So it could well be that committee today decides that they wish to approve a certificate for educational purposes, but they're not satisfied that 10 years' use has been made out for cultural and place of worship uses. So you can grant it for all of those uses, or one, or two, or none of them. And as you've heard, it is on balance of probability. So in each case, you need to be satisfied that it's more likely or not that the use is made out. If you're not satisfied, or you genuinely can't make up your mind on each point, then you should refuse the application. So hopefully that helps.
Thank you, Roger. Are there any other points from councillors now, please? Members of the planning committee.
Chair.
So Councillor Radford, is that you indicating?
Yes, I tried...
Yes, would you like to come in?
What record does our council tax base have for the premises? Because I know community buildings do get exemption as charities and churches do, but they have to register with the council tax office. So what does our council tax records have for the premises?
Can I ask Stuart to comment on that, or Dr Mann, or Michael?
I don't know the answer to that, I'm afraid, Chair.
No, I'm not aware of that. If that's something committee wishes us to check up on, then we would need to defer the matter. I think we wouldn't be able to find that out instantly.
Right, well, I'm going to invite Councillor Cummings in, and then we'll consider a deferral over this. Councillor Cummings. Councillor Cummings. I think you must be on mute.
Yeah, just to pick up on what Steve Radford has just mentioned, that gives definitive confirmation of the usage of the building. And I would like to support a deferral on that until we get that information.
Chair, Roger Mann again. It's possible that I could get that information in the next 15 minutes, so it may be that you just wish to defer consideration of this until the end of the meeting, and I could see what I could do.
Yes, I think that would be a good idea. We'll defer this now with everyone's agreement till the end of the meeting. And we'll pass on to our next item.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Chair, in which case we'll move temporarily on to our next item, which is number eight, which relates to number 70, Moregrave Street, Liverpool 18, Princess Park Ward. Chair, as you will note on the records, we have one speaker present for this item, which is Grant Erskine, who is the agent for the application.
Yes, would you like to come in, Mr Erskine? You've got up to a maximum of five minutes. Councillor Cummings, are you indicating?
Yes, I've been indicating. As I pre-arranged previously, I have to leave at this moment.
Yeah, I do understand, Councillor Cummings. Thank you for your attendance so far.
Bye, all.
Yeah. Now, Mr Erskine, would you like to come in, please?
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Okay, so, good morning. My name's Grant Erskine. I'm the agent acting on behalf of the applicants Ashley and Peppa Gadera of Evelyn May Investments, who join me, I generally say the public viewing gallery, but I believe the public, whatever, the viewing it publicly through the website. As I'm sure you're aware on the notes, we work closely with the local authority, the planning officers, to pull together this scheme which complies with all local and national planning policies. I'm here primarily to answer any questions you have, but would like to briefly highlight the merits of the scheme. Is it possible to go to the next slide if we hop on? Yes, so very, very quickly, it's the application is for an eight-bed HMO. All bedrooms are oversized, all six with own suite, two with dedicated single-use off-suite. Provides two large kitchen diners to allow four users for each one, all within one floor. It's got eight cycle spaces to the rear and a secure yard with adequate bin storage. And of course, as has been pointed out by planning officers, fantastic sustainable transport infrastructure, local bus routes, close proximity to the city centre for walking. And also for a second, can we go to the next slide, please?
Carry on, Mr Erskine. We have the slide.
Oh, sorry, I must be having a delay, sorry. So, yeah, often concerns are raised about HMO management with regards to how they're managed and antisocial behaviour. Generally, these come down to one of two reasons, i.e. it's either out-of-town investors, overseas investors, who are not active in the day-to-day management of the property, or properties that are mismanaged or neglected by management agents. In this scenario, I'd like to introduce my clients, Mr and Mrs Gadera of Evelyn May Investments. They're a husband-and-wife team based in Liverpool. I know it's not a planning policy, but it is worth noting that they do manage themselves, and they have actively developed and managed a large one in Croxathrove, a 10-bed, which I've also just included a few photographs on the next slide, just for you to see the sort of the quality and level of finish and offering they offer to local residents. So with that, we respectfully request approval for this submitted application, and I'll happily take any questions that you have. Thank you.
So do we have any questions? Because I've still got the presentation up, I can't see any virtual hands. So anybody who wants to speak, just come in. No, we don't seem to have any questions. So can I hand over to our case officer?
Thank you, Chair. You've got a detailed report in front of you. You just heard from the applicant. As John Hayes mentioned on a similar application before, members will be very familiar with the issues surrounding HIMOs. In this particular one, this is a particularly large dwelling insofar that it doesn't require any external alterations to make a number of rooms there. There's no subdivision of rooms, and there's adequate space within the ryaard for all cycle and bin stores. It's on good access routes. And we consider it to be a good property for the purposes of a HMO in terms of the internal arrangements and the size of rooms. So happy to answer any questions, Chair, but we're happy to recommend approval.
Well, I don't see any questions. So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Do members wish to move any amendments or comment before we move to the votes? No, in which case, in terms of the votes, we'll start with you, Chair. Your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you, Trish. Councillor Conception. Thank you. Councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Mallon. Thank you. Councillor Lovell. Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Radford. Councillor Radford, if you can hear us, just unmute your microphone to confirm your vote.
Agreed.
Thank you, Steve. And councillor Kemp.
Agreed.
Thank you. As we noted earlier, Councillor Cummings has left the meeting now, having previously submitted apologies for the latter items. Therefore, that is unanimous approval from members. And we'll therefore move on to our next item, which is number nine on today's agenda, which relates to a site at Central Reservation opposite number 184 Brody Avenue, Liverpool 19, in Cressington Ward.
And we don't have any speakers registered for this item, so we'll have a presentation and comments from our case officer, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just checking again, everyone can hear me?
We can, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And before I start, Chair, I've got a late objection that, again, I'd like to read out for the committee, so that they're aware of all the representations that we've had. This is an objection, and it's from Alex McGraw. Says, "I am objecting to the application. Since receiving the planning application letter, I've had anxiety, and in all honesty, I feel devastated by this. So I apologise if I'm not very eloquent in getting my point across. From an aesthetics perspective, I live in a side road a few houses down from where the mast is going to be erected. It will be one of three masts. One has already been erected, and planning is in for another further down Brody Avenue. This will be three very large and imposing masts with a company in boxes next to already existing 4G equipment, all on this one road in a picturesque, leafy residential area of the city. The boxes are grey in colour and do not blend in with the surroundings. The grass verge outside 184 has established trees on it, so I'm unsure where the equipment will go. The grass verge is much narrower here than where the other existing 5G equipment has been installed. It is literally going to be right in front of people's homes. Due to the height of the mast, it will be visible from many gardens, from which it is currently in obstructed view, unobstructed view, sorry. From a health perspective, I know health doesn't come under planning considerations, but I would be affronted not to bring it up, as this is my main concern. The Liverpool 5G.co.uk website states that 5G technology we use is in the 60 GHz spectrum. Many scientists have carried out national and international research, and a large majority agree that there are no likely negative health impacts of this technology if guidelines agreed by the International Commission of Non-Ionising Radiation Protection are followed. I don't know about you, but if you are about to be surrounded by 20-foot 5G masts, three on Brody Avenue, then more applications for roads running parallel in Mather Avenue and Egbert Road, then I don't feel comfortable with a large majority and not likely to have a negative health impact. I want to guarantee, I want to know that this level of radiation, in conjunction with other frequency-emitting equipment, i.e. existing 4G masts and boxes, will not cause damage to my health and especially to my children who have developing schools. Also, what is the protocol for ensuring guidelines are agreed to? How often is this done? We already have 4G equipment next to the pro sites. A neighbour wrote his car off due to the obstruction, the existing 4G equipment on the narrow grass verge. The same predicament will happen with the 5G equipment. An elderly neighbour passed comments that he is worried about his pacemaker being affected. One neighbour who will face the equipment has already put their house up for sale, and a few have passed comments that it is a consideration for them and me as well. I just feel devastated, to be honest. It's not a case of please don't put that wall up, it looks ugly, and we'll reduce my house price. I am pleading you to reconsider erecting these huge ugly masts, which are untested, and it is untested because we have never been in this situation before with the installation of equipment accessing this level of frequency to the degree it is being installed in residential areas." And that's the objection received, Chair. So in relation to the actual application itself, this is very similar to the one that John Hayes presented before in terms of locations, size, et cetera. It was originally submitted at 20 metres, and your officers have negotiated it down to 17 and a half. There is a foot, if it exists in 15-metre mast, some 50 metres away. And just to try and, again, reiterate this, why they have to be slightly higher. With telecoms masts, all the antennae are vertically stacked for each generation. So you'll have a 2G underneath a 3G underneath a 4G. So clearly, if you add a 5G to that, you're going to increase the height of the mast. And that's the reason why it happens. And the reason they have to be so far away from the other mast is again, so that the frequencies don't interfere with each other and scramble the signals. So that's the rationale for the height and the distance away from existing ones. As is pointed out in your papers, clearly, there will be a visual impact. However, it's for members to weigh that balance and that benefits that 5G would bring against that impact. Given that there's an existing 5G one nearby, and this will only be two and a half metres higher, that there's tree lines that go down the whole of Brody Avenue that will interfere with the connectivity visually between these two. Your officers are happy that visually, this is an appropriate location. The applicants considered alternative sites, and we accept that this is the optimum site for the mast to ensure that they get the cell coverage, and there's no need for further masts if we try to move it elsewhere. So in that regard, we're happy that the visual impact of the mast is acceptable. In highway safety terms, it's been carefully considered by the head of highways and transportation. He's satisfied that there's going to be no net detrimental impact on the highway network or to passing vehicles or pedestrians. So I'm happy to answer any questions, Chair, but we're happy to recommend the application for approval.
Well, we do have some questions. I had Councillor Steve Radford indicating first, and then followed by Richard Kemp. So Councillor Radford first.
Thank you, Chairman. I can't quite gather in my mind how close it is to the junction. And I'm just wondering, does it obscure vision of cars having these poles all along going towards what is quite a busy interchange? Are we sure it's not going to impair drivers' visibility?
Thank you, councillor. As I've said previously, the application has been carefully considered by the head of highways and transportation. He's considered matters such as those which you raise, and he is satisfied that it's not going to have any detrimental impact on highway safety to either cars or pedestrians.
You have already mentioned that. Thank you, Stuart. So can we have Councillor Kemp now, please?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to be absolutely clear in the advice that the planning officer has given. Perhaps Mr Mann might like to comment on this, but it comes from the first item. But if we believe that the detriment to the visual amenity of the area will outweigh the gain that you might get from being able to watch Netflix or Sky Sports at a slightly better frequency, it is within the rights of this committee to turn this application down?
Absolutely, councillor. It's a balancing exercise about the benefits that 5G technology will bring to local residents and the city as a whole against the visual impact of these particular masts. I explained before why we consider visually this is acceptable and the benefits outweigh the harm, but ultimately, it's a matter for committee.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I don't seem to have any. So I'm going to move that the recommendation be approved. Is that agreed?
I'd like to oppose that and speak against your motion Chairman. I think that these are always a matter of debate and discussion. And members know that on my visits to this committee before substituting for councillor Huares, I have voted for telecom masts to go in place. So I'm not against them in principle. I always look very carefully at the location. This is an area I know well. It's not in my ward, but it's roughly where three wards come together. Your own ward of Cressington, Mosley Hill and my ward. My ward ends 200 yards from here. So it's one community that's split into three different wards. So I do know the area well. And I know Brody Avenue as a whole well. Brody Avenue is a most magnificent place to live and to visit. It is a delightful tree lined boulevard with a central reservation along it all the way. It's a place that people aspire to live and it's a place when people get there, they're very happy to live in. This will be the fourth mass of its type along the length of Brody Avenue, albeit that that is in two wards. And I find that wholly unacceptable. So when I look at this and think what is the advantage that could be gained from introducing this, I refer to our report which makes it clear that although one person has been in favour of this, 29 people are objecting to it. These are people who I would almost be certain themselves use 4G, use IT regularly. We have, I correspond with officers of the council who live in that area and we're talking to each other remotely. So they are able to judge for themselves whether the marginal benefit from going up a notch in the IT ratings outweighs the visual damage to their area. The majority of those who have expressed a view have made it absolutely clear that the IT gain isn't worth the visual amenity loss. I agree with them and I'm going to vote against this proposal on the grounds of the damage it will cause to the visual amenity of the residents of Brody Avenue.
Just for purpose of clarity councillor Kemp, and in terms of obviously the message you've raised in your speech, can you confirm whether you are actually moving an amendment to refuse the application or you're merely going to vote against the chair's motion?
Well, it comes to the same thing. I will vote against the chair rather than just moving an amendment. It has the same effect.
Okay, thank you councillor Kemp. Do any other members have any further comments before I move to the vote?
It would be better to move an amendment to refuse it on the ground of visual amenity, visual impact. It's a negative impact. I think we have all our central reservations turned into a series of telecoms masts. It's going to destroy the visibility of the city. I'm sure there must be other locations could be used.
Thank you councillor Radford. Does any member wish to second councillor Radford's proposed amendments?
I'll second it on that basis, but it has the same effect.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you councillor Kemp. Just for purpose of clarity councillor Radford, as seconded by councillor Kemp, has moved an amendment to refuse the application on the ground that the proposed mast would have a substantial negative visual impact on the setting of the street scene and adjacent highway and therefore should be refused on that basis. Dealing with a vote on that particular amendment, all those in favour of the refusal for the reasons stated, please raise your hands. So councillor O'Brien, first of all, your vote. Thank you. councillor Conception. Thank you. councillor Kemp.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Kennedy.
Against.
Thank you. councillor Radford.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Lovell.
Against.
councillor Thompson.
Against.
councillor Hanson.
Against.
Thank you. councillor Mallett. councillor Mallett, just repeat your vote please if you can.
I vote.
Thank you Billy. Just to confirm the outcome of the vote on the application, that is two members voting in favour of the amendments and then that is seven members voting against. So that amendment falls and we now revert to a vote on the chair's resolution which was to approve the application. So again, same process. Firstly to you Chair, your vote please. Thank you Chair. Just a slight technical issue here. Bear with me a moment. Thank you Chair. councillor Kennedy, your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you. councillor Conception. Thank you. councillor Hanson.
Agreed.
Thank you. councillor Lovell. Thank you. councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
councillor Mallett. Thank you. councillor Kemp. Sorry councillor Kemp, that wasn't very clear. Could you repeat please?
Against.
Thank you. And lastly councillor Radford.
Against.
Thank you. Just to confirm councillor Radford, councillor Kemp, I'll record your individual dissent by name, but otherwise the outcome of the vote was to approve the application. Seven members voting in favour, two members voting against, no abstentions. I now believe that we can revert to agenda item seven in respect of numbers 139 to 141A Granby Street as the understand this list to committee now has the additional information which members requested.
Thank you Chair. Yes, I've spoken to Frank Lam who's the head of business rates at the council. He's checked his systems and on his system, the premises is listed as a shop and premises. Now, he says that there's a caveat that that description is given to us by the central valuation agency and sometimes the descriptions aren't perfect. In terms of occupation, it's been occupied since the 1st of August 2019 by the Parent Committee for Children's and Education Limited and charitable relief has been granted since that time. Prior to the 1st of August 2019, the premises was occupied by a Mr Armad Farah and there was no charitable relief granted at that time, but we don't have any information as to what the activities were within the premises then. So it may be that we want to ask the applicant to comment on that information as to what was happening prior to 1st of August 2019 and why there wasn't an application for charitable relief.
Could we write that one either is Mel Sower or the Imam? Comment on that please.
Yeah, since we purchased the property in 2008 and the property was listed as a post office and when we registered with the council, we were paying a business rate from 2013 up to November 2018. We were obviously paying business rate for 1392141 Granby Street.
So to be clear, this business rate wasn't even registered for the whole 10 years that we're talking about?
When we put the first application back in 2009, obviously this was refused due to the area was being regenerated and the council was in talk to purchase the building. But when the work started, that's when we obviously registered to do the building work and that's when we were able to complete the work on the roof and we were using 6J Mans Street.
Right, so how have I got any questions from members of the committee? I do seem to have Richard Kemp indicating. Did you want to come in councillor Kemp?
My apologies now, I obviously haven't lowered my hand.
Okay, that's fine. Any other questions? councillor Radford, I think you have put your yellow hand up.
Yeah, I hope I got.
Carry on councillor Radford. So I'm taking it the councillor Radford doesn't want to come forward. Oh yes you do, come in please.
I'm just trying to work out which button to press, sorry.
Oh, I see. All right, but you do want to speak, yes?
Yeah, I think it's a really difficult decision, but we need to go what's on the rather than sort of one party said one version of events and another party's said another version of events. I'm going to be honest, I think we've got to go on what the clinical records say. And if the clinical records don't show the property's been applied for charitable status, which is for all the purposes claimed in the last 10 years, then we have to say that's the basis of our decision.
Thank you councillor Radford. councillor Kennedy.
Yeah, just make sure, oh yes, the light in the.
I can hear you.
Good. The evidence that I was going on before when I asked my question about the establishment of the mosque came from the people who were applying for the law for permission to use the property for the purposes that they're asking for. And it was stated during that evidence, I think from the Imam, that the mosque was established in 2014. Can you confirm that?
Well, I go back to our speakers, either of you. I did hear that. I wrote it down. The mosque was established in 2014, I believe.
Actually, at the mark is before the building is two parts. One part is 6rd Chairman Street and it has, it is access. Another part is Granby Street, 139141. The Chairman Street has a specific access which is going through to the upstairs. So from 2009, the mid of 2009, we're using two buses on 6th Chairman Street. It was the base of Parents' Committee for Children's Education as a pace. And it was a learning centre. It was, it was paces on temporary because there was ongoing construction for for 139141, some part of the construction. So in that way, before we're moving to the 139141 Granby Street, we're using, we use it as a pace, 6th Chairman Street. So in such, it was a pace for the Parents' Committee for Children's Education. And at the same time, it was a temporary pace to bring, and I was leading the brain at that time because there was a gap of four years from 2009 up to 2014. There is a gap of four years. That four years, we use it, the 6th Chairman Street. And it has two purposes. The base for workforce, Parents' Committee for Children's Education and we're using as a mosque for four years from 2010 up to 2014. Then on June 2014, we officially established it for 139141 Granby Street. That was paces on permanent up to the May 2020. But the activity was on continuous, on active from 2009 up to 2020. In that 10 year spaces, we're using this property.
Well, I don't know if councillor Radford wants to come in again or whether you just haven't lowered your virtual hand councillor Radford. Do you want to come in again councillor Radford?
Thank you. I'm fine, sorry.
Okay, all right. Well, I have nobody else that's indicating to speak. On this, we have got to decide on the balance of probabilities this committee, whether there is an existing lawful use of this premises for 10 years or more for education, cultural and place of worship use. As our solicitor has explained, we could make a distinction between the three uses. We did actually have said earlier that the mosque was not established in the whole building until 2014. We have no official council records that would confirm existing use. The council records for most of this period show it as a retail outlet. It was a post office. So I would say on the balance of probabilities, we do not have 10 years continuous use as a mosque. We possibly do have 10 years continuous use as a place of education. I'd like people to comment on that. I think councillor Kennedy, you're indicating.
Well, I will come in because that is the way I was thinking. That it seems clear to me that the building either from one address or from the other address has been used. I'm not clear because of the information that's been given and the data that the council is able to provide that it is officially being a place of worship for the 10 years required. It's only that 10 years that I'm required to make the decision on. So I'm prepared to second any motion which distinguishes the education and cultural aspects from the place of worship aspect, if that's what you think moving.
Yes, thank you councillor Kennedy. That is what I'm thinking of moving. councillor Kemp wishes to come in.
Yes, I'm happy with that, but could I ask a question of either Stuart or Roger? If we agree on the balance of probability, the first two uses, is it open to the organisation to come back with a separate application to bring in the element of it being a place of worship, i.e. a mosque?
Yes Chair, it would be open to them to appeal. They can either create a new application just for that element or they could appeal the whole and try to deal with it by way of appeal. If I could just add in relation to the business rate, because this issue came up about the charitable relief. Charitable relief would also apply to the education and the cultural elements of it, not just the use as a place of worship.
Can I just add something as well Chair? They could also apply a planning commission to use it as a mosque. And the difference between a certificate of lawfulness and a planning application is that ourselves and yourselves when considering it would need to apply the planning policies, which you don't apply for a certificate of lawfulness. So we would look at things like traffic, impact, residential amenity etcetera, which we're not allowed to look at through this application.
I understand Stuart. That was clear in the notes, so I hope that everybody else has grasped that. But I welcome the fact that you've made that clear. So I would like to move that on the balance of probabilities, we would accept an existing use for education and cultural purposes. That's what I would like to move.
I'll second, I'll second Chair.
Thank you. Malcolm.
Chair.
councillor Radford, I believe you want to comment?
Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to be honest, if as educational uses are charitable and our records don't show an application for charitable use for the education purposes, I'm wondering if we are being inconsistent because whilst there might be some like one year's delay for someone to make an application just because of the admin, the period for the period for charitable use is far less than 10 years. So I would actually suggest on the objective criteria, all the 10-year usages are not proven.
Yes, I do really accept that you have a point, but... Councillor Thompson, maybe you can give us some clarity?
I don't know about giving clarity, but I did note that Roger, when he said that it was listed as a retail outlet earlier, that sometimes those kinds of classifications are not always accurate. And I could accept that the organisation may have delayed quite a long time before applying for charitable status. So yeah, I would still be in favour of the motion that has been proposed.
Yes. If I can come in very quick as the second. There is no logical connection between something being used for something and something being applied for some benefit on the basis of that use. There is no proof that it wasn't being used for that purpose simply because an application wasn't made. The balance of probability is what we're being asked to decide. And the balance of probability is that the individuals in this case were using that property. Now, what were they using that property for? The balance of probability seems to me that it was educational and cultural. That the place of worship hasn't been proved, in my view, comes from their own evidence about how the mosque was established. So I'm happy to continue to second the motion.
I'd like to carry on with the motion. Michael, can we take a vote, please?
Thank you, Chair. Just before I conduct a vote, I note councillor Kemp has his hand indicating to us. Is that correct?
No. Sorry.
Thank you, Richard.
Councillor Kemp and councillor Radford, I'm in no way upbraiding them, but they've not got used to this system yet. And I have noticed that they don't always take their virtual hand down.
The trouble is that when we got the screen up, I'd got two hands. And I've obviously pressed the wrong hand because we have a bar. And then my bar. So I'm pressing the wrong bar the whole time.
I know. It's very difficult when you first come in. So can I make a vote now?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to members for your patience with the technology, as you very much appreciate. For purposes of clarity, in terms of the motion which the Chair has moved, the motion is that educational and cultural uses be accepted as having been established for a 10-year period. And that, councillor Radford, just bear with me one second, please. And that the potential use of the premises as a place of worship has not been established at this stage on the basis of the balance of properties of the evidence placed before ourselves today. Councillor Radford, before I conduct a vote, if you do want to comment briefly now?
I would just say we should go on the objective evidence of our AIDS office. There's no reason why someone wants to pay council tax if they've got charitable status. And if our records don't show 10 years' use, we should go on those and therefore we should reject both. In the reality, the applicants will probably make up, with quite considerable reason, make an application for both uses anyway in future. So I just think we should be consistent and say not recognise on probability of either.
Thank you, councillor Radford. Just before I move to the vote, do any further colleagues in terms of members or officers wish to offer further comments?
Only that the motion would be to grant a certificate for lawful use for cultural and educational purposes only.
Thank you. That's correct. Okay, colleagues, noting all the comments and contributions to debate, we'll now move to a vote. So all those in favour of the motion submitted by the Chair, which is for grants of a certificate of lawful use in respect of educational use and cultural uses only, please indicate as follows when I take us through the vote. So Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp. Thank you. Councillor Lovell.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Radford. Thank you. Councillor Conception. Thank you. Councillor Hanson.
Abstained.
Thank you, councillor Hanson. Councillor Marat.
Agreed.
Thank you. Just to confirm the outcome of the vote, that is seven members voting in favour, one member voting against, and one member abstaining. Therefore, the effect of that is a certificate of lawful use will be granted in respect of both educational and cultural uses in respect of the application premises. Thank you, colleagues. And I believe that will conclude today's business. So Chair, if you'd like to make any concluding comments?
Hello, everybody. Your attendance today, thanks for your patience. I think in some ways it's all quite a difficult committee. And I'm sorry that we have the technical problems with one of our planning officers, which I think has occurred before. But I think that Michael Jones would like all the members of the planning committee to stay on for a short time, talk about future arrangements for our virtual committees. Thank you, everybody who's been listening today. And for those who've come forward to speak, I'll say goodbye to you now.
Thank you, Chair. And just to confirm, that concludes the live stream of today's proceedings. Thank you everyone for being in today's committee.